Welcome. Can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking appointment for the Ag Commission?
Well, I figured it's time for me to become an active member of the town. You know, I'm going to be seventy-two. My grandfather was the first selectman of Killingley. My father worked for the state of Connecticut. He was one of the founding, the FFA with Doug Butterfield. They had a lot of, and I figured it's time that I stepped up. Because the farmers, you know, there's less and less farmers now. So, time I, I'm kind of retiring, so. Time I stepped up and actually did something. You know, besides working.
On behalf of the council and the town, we do appreciate all the volunteers, everyone who wants to come forward and serve the community. It's always a great opportunity to be able to give back to the community.
Right.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, not really. I just, you know, as we go along, I'll just learn and you know, I went to the University of Connecticut for two years and then I decided I wanted to work more, so. Became a mason, got a family, built my own house, helped my cousins build houses. Now I'm a landscaper, mason, truck driver, do hay, have a farm next to the Schramms. Time we did something.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Hey, Ed. Didn't see you there. Ed and I went here.
Long time ago.
Long time ago. I think, was this the principal's office, Ed?
I don't know. I don't remember. No, this is the library. I think this is the library.
Oh, yeah?
I was gonna say, this was the library.
Yeah.
Didn't spend a lot of time in here.
No.
This hallway, it was not.
I just remember where my sister's class was and my sister was a teacher here for a long time. She was a good person.
All right, seeing no questions or comments from council, just want to thank you for coming forward and looking to volunteer. And we will be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't even see you there, Ed, sorry.
Why are you volunteering?
Yeah, I mean, it's time, you know.
Moving on in the agenda. Next item up is 5B. Frederick Schramm is seeking appointment to the Ag Commission as a regular member. His term would run from November first, two thousand twenty-four, to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. The Agriculture Commission again has two regular member vacancies and two alternate vacancies at this, excuse me, three alternate vacancies at this time. The regular member term would run for three years from November first to October thirty-first. Mr. Schramm. Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking appointment to the Ag Commission?
I'm retired from the town and I've been involved with agriculture for quite a while. My brother and I used to milk cows up on Chesna Hill Road. And we're working to try to save the land. So, I'm very interested in getting people to see that agriculture is a part of the town.
All right. Again, on behalf of the council and the town, just thank you for coming forward, looking to volunteer. That will open up for any council members with questions, comments.
Hi. I have a question. So what is the most important message you want to get out to the community as far as farming? So how would you get that out to the community? How important it is? Because I know it's important to you and it's important to a lot of us. But how do you translate that as part of the Ag Commission?
I think through the Ag Commission, working together, the people that are on the Ag Commission, we can probably make a difference.
So would you have more programs available? Would you set up like workshops, kind of like planning and zoning does workshops?
Yes.
So would that be something you would be interested in?
That they started talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Have they made meeting?
Ed, Mike.
Have they had quorums or are they, is this going to fill it or how was?
Yeah, so this will definitely help the Ag Commission as far as being able to meet. They have canceled a number of their meetings due to lack of quorum, right? So they are very, very slim on membership right now with not having a lot of members. So adding two additional members will definitely help them be able to meet more consistently and probably help them with getting those, planning for some of the programs that they're looking to get done, done. Just because, you know, during certain seasons of the year, as agricultural is, they get busy. And so they just, it's harder for them to make those meetings. So they have had, I think the last several have had to be canceled due to lack of quorum.
So this will help out a lot with, you know. So it's good we got some people coming forward.
So, because what I was going to say, one of my first liaison positions, because I've been on the council five years now, was as an Ag liaison, and I absolutely love that commission. And I'm now an alternate again and we haven't been able to meet. So thank you for stepping up to both of you because this commission is so important. And when we don't have enough people, we can't get anything done.
Right.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Any further comments?
Yeah, I just want to say, save our land, save our farms, God bless our farmers. Thank you both.
Thank you.
No further questions? Just want to say thank you again. We'll be voting on your appointment on next Tuesday.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll now move on in the agenda. Next item up is item 3C. And I apologize if I mispronounce your last name. George Schlog.
Schlow.
Schlow? George Schlow, Jr. is seeking appointment to the Permanent Building Commission. As an alternate member, his term will run from December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, to December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-eight. The Permanent Building Commission currently has one alternate member vacancy. Again, the alternate member term runs for four years from December sixteenth through December fifteenth. Welcome. Can you just tell us a little about, a little about yourself, background and why you're seeking appointment?
George Schlow, Jr. I've lived in Killingley for about forty-five years. I owned the Baltic Roofing Company up until last year when I closed the company, retired. So I was forty-eight years in business and doing roofing. I did, it was a commercial roofing company. I think I can bring some good benefit to the council and the knowledge. And I had talked to them about this roof that they're replacing now. I went there to their last meeting and brought some insight in, on some materials and stuff. And I know a lot of people and I found out, like, I didn't really know about the system they were doing, but I found out about it for them and brought some information for it. So I think I can help with that and I've worked in construction field for quite a few years, so. So I think that'll be a benefit to them.
I definitely agree. Anyone who has background in the field that the commission deals with is always an asset. Any questions, comments from council?
No, I recently met George because he joined the Davil, I'm sorry, the Atawagun Board of Directors, which I'm on with Patty and so.
I know he lives there.
Yes. Yep, so I think he'd be an asset to the Permanent Building Committee.
If I may, I just want to also put out that I know the committee has struggled at some points in times to be able to have a quorum to meet, especially since, given the projects that they're doing, they have to, they do have some urgency needs around special meetings. And sometimes it is challenging for them to be able to get that quorum. So having the final alternate position filled will be a definite benefit as they're trying to get through this, the last phases of this big construction project that they're currently working on right now and getting the timing of that done, especially given it's a occupied renovation. So it's very helpful.
And I do want to say thank you for coming forward at the last meeting with the information about the roofing.
Yeah.
Like I said, anyone who's an expert in the field, it's always great to have their input, especially if they consider.
I don't know if I'm an expert. I did it long enough, I guess, you know, so.
Humble, too.
Okay. Mr. Brandowski.
Glad you're coming forward.
Yep.
Haven't seen you in the last, the last month or so, running to you quite a few times.
Yeah, zips.
Yep, it was good. So you're retired, but now we're, are you volunteering for this?
Yeah.
It's good.
I picked up a part-time job. I was working at Westview. I actually gave my notice. I'll be done with them. I'm just, I'm going to be sixty-seven. I'm done working, so.
This may be work, too.
I was going to say, be careful. This might be a little bit of work.
Yeah, I'm not afraid of a little, so, all right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from council? Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Okay. All right, I want to thank you again for coming forward, looking to volunteer, and we'll be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Yeah, I know a couple of the guys on the board already, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda is item 3D. Teresa Locke is seeking appointment to the Killingley Housing Authority. As a regular member, her term will run from January first, two thousand twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. The Killingley Housing Authority currently has one regular member vacancy. And again, the regular term runs for five years from January first to December thirty-first. Welcome. Can you give us a little bit of information about you and your background and why you're seeking appointment?
Please don't mind me. I do have notes. I'm in that generation.
No problem.
Came very well prepared. My name is Teresa Locke, Teresa Heavy. My husband owns TV Electric. We moved to this. I, my husband had bought in a house on Reynolds Street back in twenty nineteen. We got married, we had a baby. So now we've been here for the last, I think I already stayed four or five years now. And we're very excited to be a part of this community in town. My role is currently, I work for the University of Florida doing research. And I'm currently working with early educators in the state of Massachusetts, bringing coaching and mentoring and writing journal articles on our findings. I am currently also a professor at Post University in Waterbury, Connecticut. And I am pursuing my doctorate's degree, which I should be defending my dissertation in the summer of two thousand twenty-five on educational leadership and policy with a focus on on using research to inform practice and policies. So that's a little bit about my background.
Have you served on any board or commission before?
No, I have not, but I have always been very interested. Again, being very new to this community, I do some hobbies and I get to meet a lot of fellow community members and I'm very involved. A lot of people in town already know my daughter, Arabella, so she's very well-known. We do a lot of stuff at the library. Until recently, I ran into Mr. Dave Smith and he was like, Teresa, you have a lot to offer. I would, you should check on the board to see if there's anything that you and your husband might be interested in. And I found that the housing authority was something that I could probably start small in. I'm originally from Western Massachusetts, so I work a lot with a diverse population. I love the elderly. I should have, if I had all the money in the world, my job would probably be an event coordinator to plan events for nursing homes. That would be one of my kind of niche to do. If I had extra time, I would definitely pursue that. I definitely support, you know, affordable housing, especially for elder, disabled, making it affordable, making sure that they're able to get the needs met. You know, being, working for the University of Florida, a lot of people do move to Florida, no taxes. But they, it's very poor down there, poorly with the elderly. I can't. I don't want that. I don't want that. I'm going to be old one day, you know. My neighbors, you know, are getting old. I want to make sure that they stay in our community, but we need to be able to support them in what they need.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council?
You already have my vote. So Teresa is one of the kindest, most compassionate, sweet people. I had no idea about your background. I have met, I met Teresa through our nonprofit and her crafting, which is absolutely phenomenal. But I think what you've said about the seniors is so important and I think you'd be a great addition. My mom is at Maple Courts.
Okay.
And I think you and Carol Green would hit it off amazing.
I actually got the chance to meet her.
Yeah, Carol's a wonderful person, too. I think you'd be phenomenal.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council, comments?
I'll just say, I look forward to, with all your energy, seeing all the contributions you make. You're all out of energy. It's going to be good.
All right. Do you have any questions for us?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know where to start. I'll get back to my phone. So, let's see. I have a lot, I'm going to try and focus this. So one of my main questions is, what are the key metrics used to measure the success of housing programs in our community? I'm all about numbers and data and quantitative and qualitative data.
Yeah, so for, you know, housing, housing metrics, we, so we have not had a recent housing study performed for our region. That is something that Northeast Council of Governments, our local cog, was, that's been on their work plan to complete for the region, including Killingley. And that helps us better understand what housing needs by demographics. And it does help investors, developers determine what, it helps them with financing as well to determine how, you know, what, what is really the demand and the need in order to be able to bring that appropriate housing into the area. We know categorically across the state, across, you know, many areas, that there is a housing deficit, especially within lower income and in elderly. We have long wait lists for our elderly housing, so our housing authority has very long waiting lists. Every community around us has long wait lists for their housing authorities. Do we have capacity at some point to look at developing further additional senior disabled housing? That's, you know, a larger community question. That's a larger community investment and whether or not there's alternative funding for that. And then once that happens, it essentially turns over to the housing authority, which is a separate entity from the town. So the housing authority, they're a board, you'll be a board member of, but they are, the authority itself is a, they're separate from the town. And they are, they have very, there's very strict guidelines that they have to work under with regards to income eligibility and rate, rent stabilization and things like that, what they can collect within their different housing structures, right? So there's very different programs that have to take place. So, you know, clearly, you know, there does need to be more work on housing study. That is a, that's an investment that would have to be made financially in order to be able to complete a study for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But the housing authority is on a shoestring budget.
I was just going to bring that up.
Shoestring budget.
Yes.
So that's it. We fight that all the time. They do, they do a great job of keeping the thing going. My mother was there for quite a few years. It was a great place for her. But every time they're trying to go out to do something, to try to get grants, it is tough. It, because they just don't have, if they had more funds, it would be great. They make it work. And I think it's a great place.
The town staff, we assist them with grant writing and applying for those grants, helping to administer those grants. The last couple of rounds that we've submitted, unfortunately, the state has shifted the grant awards for elderly, for that housing population to the other side of the state. And they haven't awarded anything on this side of the state. So that's been a challenge and hopefully that will, that will shift, you know, in the upcoming years. But again, that's, that's been a challenge that we've faced the last two rounds of grant cycles. They have shifted them into larger population areas.
I was able to talk to Carol a little bit and I did hear about that struggle. I'm wondering if we make more of a noise and a roar, they'll probably listen to us. So yes, I could get to look at that a little bit.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
And it's not just a matter of filling out the applications. They put forth forty, fifty thousand dollars just to get plans made to have them turned down, so that's a lot of money. And then the funding is on a shoestring because of the state's restrictions.
That's what I was going to bring up Teresa with, because as Ed said, with a shoestring budget that they work on, they do amazing things over there. But with your background and your research and capabilities, do you think you'd be able to kind of broaden the scope of being able to bring more grant opportunities to the table or kind of think outside the box and maybe come up with other ways to support bringing more funds in?
I can do my best. I can't make any.
Do you have ideas?
I have ideas.
I'm sure you have ideas. That's what I was thinking.
You know, definitely analyzing the policy, making a evaluations criteria and to be able to go through, take it more like a research study, right? You're going to have, this is what you want to do. Create some policy alternatives, see how those play out, get some different ideas, come up with a matrix and then be able to evaluate, evaluate using criteria, but then using data and research to back it up. Because we all know that if there's already research out there and if there is already grants that are going more towards the bigger, the hard food side, why not cite all those sources and say, hey, no, ninety percent of the income that we're funding that you guys are coming are going this way. We're not getting anything. How is this equitable? So, yeah. I do have more questions, too. Sorry. But no, you guys can continue if you have any more.
And make sure you do, you use us to help facilitate that, too.
Absolutely.
Whatever we can do to help.
Always.
And you said you had more questions?
Sorry, guys. I know I'm going to end up taking this whole thing.
It's uncomfortable. That's, that's what we're here for. We'd like you to be engaged and you're engaged before you even start, so this is good.
Exactly.
This is very helpful.
How does the council support diversity and inclusion within, I guess, the housing authority and with other, other boards?
Well, the housing authority is unique to that group of people. So the rest of the town, we appoint the members at board, but you guys are the ones that are going to have to look at what, how that works over there.
Yep.
You know, what the population is, if we need some changes, you know, something to that effect. So, yeah, as Mary was saying, the town has little input other than appointing the members.
Okay.
But we're here. I mean, we're trying to support things, but it's more what the housing authority does. They're pretty much on their own.
Carol Green is a rule follower and it goes by when the applicant, application comes in and she has them all listed and she starts at the top and she goes to the bottom. So it doesn't matter what your income is or she's, it's just, she follows the rules.
She didn't show me, like, you know, I didn't look at any identifiers, but she was like, this is my staff, Teresa. And it was just long. It was very sad. It almost made me cry. And then I think Patty had already answered some of this question. It was like, what did you want to see from me if I am appointed to the board? And I think you guys answered it a little bit already. Anything else, though?
I think like Patty talked about, always having somewhat new ideas, a fresh set of eyes, especially someone with your education level, your background, your experience. I think it'll be very valuable to the housing authority. And, and like I've said before, I mean, we always encourage people to come forward. We're always thankful when people come forward to look to volunteer and get back to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will also be voting on your appointment next Tuesday. Thank you.
She would be filling Roxanne Pathis's seat. I think that's a pretty close. If you knew Roxanne, you knew Roxanne was not going to let him quiet water.
I love that.
All right, next item up on the agenda is item 3E. Patricia Daly Beal is seeking reappointment to the Killingley Housing Authority. As a regular member, her term would run from January first, two thousand twenty-five, to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-eight. She has attended ten out of ten meetings in two thousand twenty-three and five out of five meetings in two thousand twenty-four. And the housing authority currently has one regular member vacancy. Welcome. Can you tell us a little bit about your, your time on the housing authority and why you're seeking reappointment?
Well, I like being on the board. We all get along very well, so it's not a contentious board or anything. We usually can discuss any, you know, items that are out there that might need solving till we can come up with a resolution. I'm seeking reappointment because I've worked in housing for forty years. I've been a housing authority director. Now I'm a consultant. So it's a subject I know very well, especially the Section Eight program and more federal programs. But I'm also now learning about the state of Connecticut program, so. I only did state housing in Massachusetts. So it's something, you know, else to do and something more to learn.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Questions, comments from council?
Yeah, I just want to say, that's going to be an amazing addition. Like, this is an exciting night, kind of, all the experiences coming in and the energy.
Any other comments? I just want to thank you for already serving and already volunteering for the community and looking forward to continue that. We'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is item 3F. Patrick McLaughlin is seeking reappointment to the Water Pollution Control Authority. As a regular member, his term would run from November first, two thousand twenty-four, to October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. Mr. McLaughlin attended ten out of ten meetings in two thousand twenty-three and six out of six meetings in two thousand twenty-four. The WPCA currently has one regular member vacancy and two alternate member vacancies. Welcome. Can you just tell us a little bit about the WPCA and why you're seeking reappointment?
Okay, so I've been associated, involved with the Water Pollution Control Authority here in Killingley since nineteen ninety-seven when, back at that time, the town manager and a few, and the council thought it would be better to be run by private enterprise. So that's when they went to contract operators. And I staffed it. I was a town engineer. I was a staff to it then. I was, moved here in nineteen ninety-six when I took the position of town engineer here and lived here ever since. I worked here for the town for seven years. Then I went back to the private sector. And more recently, finished up my career in Norwich as a director of public works. And I was there for thirteen years. Five and a half as a director. Before that, I was a city engineer. So I'm very familiar with the treatment plant here and I, I know that we're not in a good situation right now. We're in a very bad situation and it affects the whole town. It's not something that came about unexpectedly. I mean, basically, for twenty-plus years, we've been saying that the plant is pretty near capacity. Well, this spring, they decided, you know, the analysis that was done determined it was at capacity, so. So now we have a big problem to solve and we need to gain, get capacity through either reductions in what we're taking in or expand the plant. And expanding the plant is a very expensive proposition. But I think if the community's going to grow, that's going to be absolutely necessary. And the first step, basically, is relocating the Little League fields away from the plant because we need that space. Now, it seems, and we've been, you know, talking about that in the town for twenty, twenty-five years also. I did conceptual plans twenty-five years ago of the field layout once, when the town got the Davis property, you know, a long time ago. But that, I think we really need to move forward with that urgently because that really is key. And it's not going to go over great. And it's not gonna go over great, I wouldn't imagine either. People, you know, they've put a lot of work into those fields, and they're not gonna wanna leave them. And it takes time to establish new fields. So, that's the reason why I think that is important, that we get moving on that. And, because we have to do the studies and the, you know, the capacity analysis on where the best way to expand the plant to be able to provide the treatment that the community wants.
I agree. And the council has talked quite a bit recently, over the past year, year and a half, maybe even two years at this point, about moving the process forward with getting the fields moved over to the Davis property. And then we just allocated funding for the, the capacity increase study in hopes that, once we have a plan in place, we might have a better chance of getting grant money to be able to do the increase. Because it doesn't just impact Killenly, it also impacts Brooklyn, as you know. Because it's, it's holding up any kind of industry or anything that comes in that, that needs the capacity. So, I mean, it's something that, that is important. It is something that we're working on as a council, as a town. And, and I don't know if we would get a whole lot of pushback on moving the fields, because then he wouldn't be playing ball right next to a sewer plant.
Yeah, right.
So...
I don't know, people just don't generally like change.
True, true. I agree. I agree.
And, and as, as far as the layout of the fields, too. I think I've heard that they're talking about putting them down in the lower level that was the gravel excavation area, which I, I have a lot of experience with parks and stuff from the city of Norwich, and I just don't think that that is, they should be up top, coming in right off of Route twelve, because you shouldn't have people driving through local roads, residential neighborhoods.
They're not looking to have access to it from local roads. They're looking at having access off of Route twelve, even going to the lower. That's how the access is currently being...
But the better land for fields, because now the, the land that's been excavated is all filled in with silt. And that's not gonna be the best, you're better off putting fields in natural grade with loam and, you know, a natural soils profile than you are in putting them in a pile of silt. So, anyway, that's another, I guess the sewer authority's not gonna make those decisions, but...
And just, the engineering department is definitely working through, you know, we've, we've shared that. And I think we probably did pull out one of your original concepts around field placements over there. It's been talked about, I think, and sketched many, many times, but, you know, that has been...
Yeah, I don't even remember what those looked like. They were so long ago.
Right. There's been a number of iterations over the twenty years on that. And clearly, that is obviously up to priority. But I appreciate Pat's very diligent, she, he's always, you know, I've worked with Pat as when I was a finance director, and he's been on the WPCA all this time, as well as now being the town manager. He has always been very thoughtful and in his contributions to everything with the WPCA. He brings his background and his knowledge into that meeting, which is really beneficial to not just the other board members, but the staff as well. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a great ability to have good communications like that. You know, he's participated a lot in the, you know, the background, you know, negotiation stuff that we have going on now. He's participating. And so, it's, it's great to be able to have that communication and that expertise to be able to talk through.
Do you have any questions for us?
No.
Do you have any suggestions for us? As far as getting through this moratorium, I don't, I've gotten, I've gotten negative feedback. I've gotten good feedback. What do you think is worst-case scenario in the situation we're in right now, and best-case scenario? As far as the timeline?
Timelines, yeah.
Yeah. Timelines are important.
I don't know that anybody can put a timeline right now.
Yeah, but I mean, we're talking years, not months.
Yep. Yep.
There is some possibility, possibly, of getting some reductions in Frito Lay's effluent, possibly. You know, that could help in the shorter term, but that would still be a, probably two years away from that. By the time they were able to, or at least a year or so. I mean, even if they, if they find that there's some possibilities. We don't know yet if there's much that they can do or not, but they might, you know, they'd do primary treatment there. If they did a little more treatment, possibly, you know?
Right. And the good thing is that Frito is willing to have that conversation. It's good that they're wanting to be part of a solution in some of this. So, it's, it's helpful with that. But, you know, maybe we can get some interim capacity as we try and work towards that long-term capacity solution that we need to get to.
Right, 'cause we were talking five to seven years to lift that moratorium minimum. So, if Frito Lay did their updates...
If, if, if there's, if there is a modification that could happen. And again, this is a big if, right? Where there's no, and, and I wanna be clear that it's not that Frito Lay has an option, and they're debating whether or not they can or can't, right?
Oh, absolutely. We're not beating on Frito.
They're, they're just, they're, they're willing to explore if there's a potential option out there for, for them to do an added reduction, right? It's purely, that's what it is. If it comes out that they do have the ability to do a reduction, then they're, and it does make any sort of real movement on treatment capacity at the plant, then that would give the WPCA some capacity for a duration of time, right? So, maybe the moratorium is lifted, maybe it's partially lifted, maybe, like, there's a whole nother conversation around that. And, and it's way too early to say what that looks like and what their decisions they're gonna be faced with. They're gonna be heavy decisions to be faced with, though, you know? And so, but it may give them some interim flexibilities to deal with some of the questions and some of the appeals that they're receiving right now, to be able to make it through to that longer term. Again, this is all very hypothetical, all very...
Right, and this is very new. The moratorium just went on.
We have absolutely no idea if there's even something that's gonna be able to take place. So, and we can't really, you know, go through what, what they're looking at. But I mean, they're taking a very deep dive through their process.
Thank you.
Ms. Murphy?
I had a couple of questions. That was amazing, like, your history. I didn't know all that stuff about, about the DPW of Norwich. Is that what you were? That's like amazing. In your time, with all of that experience, have you ever been through a moratorium before?
No.
So, this is the first?
This is new ground.
What would you say to the people that are asking us, how did we get here? Like, how did we get in this situation if we could see it, you know, for several years?
Hmm, that's a good question. I... Guess we just weren't proactive enough.
Thank you, thank you. So, there's been some talk, somebody had an idea about bringing in a separate committee with extensive background like that, because you guys have to run the plant and deal with that to oversee. Would you guys be open to that, like, a, a committee just to deal with the upgrade? And I can't remember if they said design and upgrade. I think they said just the upgrade, like, once you got the funding. How would you feel about that?
I don't, I don't know where you're gonna get the...
We don't either.
People with the expertise. But I, I don't, I, I think it should be handled by the WPCA. And I think the members of the, would feel, would, you know, somebody pulled the rug out from under them or something if, you know, if that was the case.
Okay, thank you.
And we have a hard time keeping, you know, while we had, unfortunately, we had, one of our members passed away about a year ago. So, we have a vacancy now, and it's been tough to get new people in there. But it is called an authority. And if you take away the authority, then I think you're gonna have some people that, that are on it now that wouldn't be too thrilled.
Thank you.
I mean, that's the big thing. We can't fill all the, all the spots.
Hey, can you talk to...
Oh, yeah, we can't, we can't fill all the spots. We have the vacancy. And that's tough. Given the situation you're in, that's even worse. Because everything, the timelines, if, if for some reason we can't get a quorum or whatever, so it'd be nice to fill that position. And I try to talk to people, nobody want, nobody wants to get into that.
Especially right now.
Yes, that's the, whatever it is. What else can the council do? Any thoughts that what we can do? I mean, we got the money to get the design started, but other than that, how can we? What can we do to help you guys?
Well, I don't, I think, you know, you've been very supportive in the past, the council has, providing the funding that was needed with the upgrades that we did five or six years ago, whenever that was now, the support behind that. I mean, it's putting the money up now to get the, started with the capacity and expansion plans. I mean, that's pretty much what you can do. And if we, the need, when, we're gonna need more funding, just be, continue to be supportive of it, I guess, would, I would say.
And then it takes the DEP forever to do anything. I mean, even the...
There's not much you can do about that either.
It sat there. We, we got the referendum, got the money authorized, and they were dragging their feet. And then, same thing with our permit. It's two and a half years sitting over there. I don't, I don't know how you can light a fire into those guys.
Well, if you find out, that would, a lot of people would like to know.
You know, but even that, we, we, we gotta keep them with us. You know, I can't alienate them, because they're gonna approve additional upgrades. So, I, I don't know where to, if there's someplace that, you say, trying to, I throw it out there. Our permit is out two and a half years, just like the, the battery storage and everything else. They come in and DEP's gonna bless their projects, but we're left in the lurch, you know, where... So, they seem to respond to that, but, you know, we're held hostage.
I, I do have one question. This was something that was, Citizen had asked me a couple of months ago. And bringing up the battery storage, it brought it back to my memory. I had gotten asked, and this camp, question came up after the moratorium came out, how we're having a moratorium now when the capacity for NTE, the power plant, had already been approved? And if that's not happening now, then where did that capacity end up? And how we ended up basically getting to a moratorium now? If we have something that was gonna put out that much volume that was approved, but then now the plant's not coming? How did that play into everything with the moratorium?
I, I would say because the detailed modeling was run last winter, end of the winter, that before that modeling was done. And we had a very bad winter last winter because of all the rain. That really put the plant at jeopardy, really, because of the heavy rains like in last winter. That's when things really came to, like, what's going on here? And then, so they redid the model, you know, they, they, the consultant checked the model out better and determined that basically we're at capacity. I mean, in day, like, the last couple of months, when there's been a drought, it's not an issue. But we can't plan that we're gonna, you know, have low flows all the time. We have to kinda plan for the worst.
And it's always crazy flows. It's not a half inch...
Well, it fluctuates, yeah.
You get three inches in half a day, and it...
But last, like, that last December, January, I mean, we had all kinds of flooding problems in Norwich, but it was, the whole northeast was, you know? And that's when it kinda drove it to a head, like, okay, the plant's nearly failing, you know?
So, taking that in consideration is probably a good thing. We didn't have all that added flow coming from the power plant?
Yeah.
And that is another thing, that the WPCA was, has also been working on I and I, too, in recognizing, but as we've gone through I and I in replacing mains and in relining mains and all of that, we haven't seen...
Dramatic improvements.
Changes, and, yeah, dramatic improvements in, in any of that situation. So, you're continuing with I and I, you, you got, WPA just approved some additional I and I work. So, they're not abandoning that process. They're continuing with that. Because, again, if there's improvements that can be made, that you grab what you can grab. But that's not likely gonna be the long-term solution for the overall long-term health of the plant, right? Is, it's not just sitting in I and I infiltration. So, you know, they, they've been trying. We've replaced a lot of lines, what, about ten miles?
Oh, yeah.
Of mains and reli, between relining and replacing through the downtown area. And that was in ten, two thousand ten through, yeah, ten to thirteen, I think.
But also, it's loading, too. It's like, the, 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 energy plant was gonna be basically clean water. So, that isn't as difficult as, you know, heavily loaded concentrations from industry.
Any other questions, comments?
I only have one more, and it might not be for this. I'm not sure. So, you know, if it's not for this, just say it's not for this. But the only thing I don't understand about the most recent capacity study is it's really based on the mixed liquor target of thirty-four hundred milligrams per liter. And when I look at that, you're so far away on your target. Like, I don't doubt that you're in capacity at all, at capacity, because they can't keep it in the tanks. That's the real problem. But then the capacity study, the most recent one, was based on that target, which is, you know, a thousand milligrams per liter. You're far away from it. And supposedly, the eighty thousand gallons per day is what's gonna bring you to that. And I just don't see it, to me, the real, the capacity should show the real problem, which is you can't keep it in the tanks during a rain event. Like, in other words, you can't waste at this point, even to get down to the, the lower target. Because you can't waste enough. So, I, I just don't quite understand the most recent capacity study and the moratorium, like, is...
I, I would say, that's a great question, and I don't, I don't have an answer for that, Pat. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't really either, but that would be one we'll have to discuss with the consultant that did the model.
And maybe have a conversation with you in that meeting, just so that way, we're not trying to retranslate through, right? Like, sometimes I think it's easier for you to just participate in that, you know, kinda group session, just so that way, we're not trying to, you know, I may filter incorrectly completely. So, let's see if we can set up a time that you can participate in a call or, you know, a meeting.
We can just do it at the meeting.
Yeah, and talk through...
I mean, you can ask that question.
I always feel, I asked, or I talked to Ben about it. I wasn't sure what the target was. Because when I look at it, the target is lower, and the target is much lower.
Okay.
So...
It's, it's more...
They're two separate issues, like keeping it in the tank, which is the real issue. And you've been at that for a long time. But the thing that determined this is the day is based on that strange mixed liquor thing. And so, the other question, Mary, and you, whoever has the info. As we go forward with Frito Lay, and they are deciding if they can mitigate, I, I'm just unsure about that timing of that. Because if they mitigate, from that report, it said it's going to produce nitrogen issues.
It could, yeah.
Yeah, so, in terms of capacity, I'm just not...
And so...
It might have some drawbacks, if, yeah.
Correct. And so, that's what we are gonna be participating in. As they're doing their evaluation, they're gonna be sharing that information so we can reload, load it through the, basically the capacity analysis to determine what is it gonna do on the inside of the plant? Because it, depending on what, what happens, it may actually be more harmful to, like...
Yeah, that's the part I'm wondering about. So, there's the two million dollars, and that's gonna cover the design and the capacity. and that's going to be after you have a determination from Frito Lay, is that what you're saying?
Well, so we are currently, right now, we have an RFQ to deep for them to review and approve, for us to go out on the street to perform the RFQ, to hire a design firm, to begin the design process, right? Simultaneously, we're having the conversation with Frito Lay about, can we do another deep dive? What's your process, is there, is there a tweak that can be made, right? So, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to incorporate their information, of course, they have to run it through their channels, right? I don't know that we want to hold up design for however long Frito Lay takes to go through that. We'll have to filter in their information as we're going through. So, yeah, it's going to be a coordinated effort, right? None of this is stagnant in their own, you know, columns, this doesn't complete before we can complete this. Like, this is going to be kind of a concert and symphony going on at the same time.
Yeah, definitely, you see the timing I'm talking about, though, because, well, not just hard, it's going to affect your funding. You know, if you suddenly do this with Frito Lay and you gain capacity and you're saying the moratorium's off, that's going to affect your funding, it's going to affect your design if they made a nitrogen problem instead of a BOD problem.
I think it's more of a short-term solution that we're looking for with Frito Lay.
It would be minimal.
It's not going to give us a huge amount of capacity.
No.
It's going to, you know, maybe just lighten it enough so we could take the moratorium off, possibly, but.
Or minimally, like, manage some emergent appeals even, right? So it's unlikely that it would eliminate the moratorium, right? It would likely give the WPCA some flexibility around emergent appeals. So, you know, son is trying to get mom and dad into the newly renovated or the, you know, that accessory dwelling unit kind of thing, right? And that's the only way to take care of mom and dad, right? Maybe that's a decision that comes before them and not something that they're able to grant because of this. But likely, we're not able to, we're not likely going to be able to lift a mor, lift the moratorium based on what we're currently, our current knowledge is.
Okay, and in terms of talking at that meeting, I do apologize, Pat, because I never know how much I'm supposed to talk at that meeting. Like, because our liaison is kind of, we're just supposed to kind of relay.
Well, you have, you bring a certain, a definite level of expertise to it also.
I know, but I just never know, so I apologize if I do it at the wrong time or whatever.
So can I ask a question? So in layman's terms, for us non-experts, so adding the third train, the capacity upgrade, correct, would create an overflow in the event of like a massive storm or something, where we don't have anywhere for that to go at this point? Is that what we're, so a Frito Lay adjustment would not really support, it wouldn't help us in that type of scenario, where we had another hurricane Katrina or something. So that's why the capacity is so important, because it would create an overflow, regardless of a nitrogen or phosphorus issue. Is that where we're going with that, so people understand why it's so important?
Yeah, it's not going to give us a huge reduction, and not in flow really at all, more loading.
So, an additional capacity train, an additional treatment train allows for longer time for the treatment process to take place. Gives them an additional train, right now, they can't even take a train down for.
That's what I'm saying, there's nowhere for it to go besides.
But, but even not for overflow for maintenance, right? Like, they can't take one down for maintenance, they have, both of them have to be running it all the time. So having the additional, and the design needs to determine, does it need to be one, does it need to be two, right? Like, what needs to truly be added, right? We've made some assumptions around that based on the 2013 design, right? Was it 2013 design, that had a conceptual around a capacity increase?
The, you know, the plant.
Yeah.
Plan.
Yeah, that had.
Facility study.
Right, that had a capacity conceptual design around the addition of one tank, right? Was it one tank, Pat?
I think so, yeah.
I think it was one train on the side.
And, yeah.
And whether or not.
What the configuration of the tanks are, too, you know, I mean, put a circular tank.
Yep, and so it depends on, you know, that plan assumed that we were going to, that plan assumed, that plan made the determination that based on all of the information that they had at the time, the, you know, flows and the loads and everything that we had at the time, that the plant was likely to reach capacity in about 2035, I want to say, or thereabouts, before we were really at full, you know, we were really there, right? Clearly, that came sooner, whether that's because of, you know, just growth that has occurred, both within Brooklyn, because Brooklyn has done a fair amount of development since the 2013 plan, and as well as Killenley. But that, you need to have a new, you need to have that design look at. What are we really looking at for potential current, as well as future capacity of availability? Because let's face it, this isn't going to happen again for, you know, years to come.
I would just say, Patty, too, that you, it, I mean, you could check with Joe Ceter and Ben, but it is possible if Frito Lay mitigated enough BOD that they could run with one of their aeration basins off. And then you would have space, so that would be determined in the capacity study. So it's not necessarily, oh, it wouldn't matter, it might matter, you know?
Any further questions, comments? Do you have anything further for us?
No, I don't think so.
I want to thank you for serving the community and volunteering and dealing with everything we're dealing with down there, and thank you for being here tonight and answering the questions we had.
Okay, you're welcome.
And we'll be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is item four, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Chlorea, did we have anything submitted?
We had none submitted.
If anyone would like to make public comment, comment has to be pertinent and related to the items that were on this evening's agenda, which is just the appointments and reappointments, the interviews we went through. If anyone would like to speak on those, step up to the microphone at the chair, or actually at the podium, we can turn that one on. Whichever one works better for you, if you want to sit in a chair or stand at the podium.
You may just need to hit the button to turn on the microphone.
As a citizen of Killenley.
Just state your name and address first, please.
Donald Bell, 57 Island Road, Dago. As a citizen of the community, I want to thank everyone who's come forward to serve on our commissions. I think it's very important that we get good people to do good things. I don't have much to say, other than the wastewater plant situation.
I don't get a sense of urgency. Where is the urgency in moving this forward? You know, I mean, if, with the projects I've worked on, a situation like this would never happen. Where is the sense of urgency? That's all I have.
Thank you. Any further comments? Last call for public comment. Seeing no more public comment, move on on the agenda, we have nothing for old business, nothing for new business, nothing for executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made by Ms. Brandelsky, I believe it was seconded by Ms. Barclay. Discussion, comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned.